Okay, my watch just turned four o'clock, so I'm gonna call a meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our 6:15 2021 regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I make that motion?
Councilman Lowen moves, is there a second?
No second.
Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to item, agenda item C, approval of vouchers. Today we have manual checks in the amount of 232,000. Looks like we got a typo in here, Matt, is it 200, 216? Do we have an extra one?
Extra one.
Okay, so it's 232,216 dollars 36 cents. We have ACH of 25,428.55 for a total voucher approval of 257,644.91. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll probably choose to abstain again because I see there's two Elcon invoices on there again that I don't recall that we've went over yet, I think they're on the agenda for today.
Okay, so we're going to, so will that, if in so doing, will we alleviate the need for item F2 if we just approve those vouchers since they're in the vouchers?
That way, yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so, any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
I'm gonna go motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
One abstention and no opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to agenda item D, which is our public comment section, Mr. Stiles.
If anyone on the, on the Zoom would like to make a comment, I don't see anybody from the public, just our friends from the news and Kimberlin, how are you Kimberlin? And then Danielle, so we don't have anybody from the public necessarily on that, but if anyone does show up, well, you can raise your hand and we can do it from, unmute you and let you speak, but I think Zach probably wanna jump in.
I was giving a quick update on the, on the highway job. I'm sure you've all seen the traffic control to get moved over, we're working on the north side of the road now. The weather's obviously been a bit of an issue this week, but as soon as we can get it to dry just a little bit, they're really close to being able to bring the rock back in and get that compacted in and start pouring some concrete. We have spoken with the homeowner on the, on the north side of the street, sits back there in the trees, and we'll make sure to keep them in their driveway, we'll probably do it half and half so that they still have access into their driveway the entire time. So, that's about the only update I have, anybody have any questions?
Do you feel like it's gone well, I know for, for Andale, this is kind of their, one of their first forays into the KDOT world?
Yeah.
And I know they got a little practice on the trail?
Yep.
Which we're going to, going to recognize tomorrow, but, but you feel good about how, how things are going?
Yeah, it's gone really smoothly, they're a good contractor to work with and things are going really smoothly and they said as long as we can get the weather to cooperate, things have been moving along really quickly too, once, once that all happens, so.
Very good, any other questions for Zach? Thanks for keeping an eagle eye on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sure, Zach.
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, all right. We will move on to agenda item E, which is a presentation on our electrical system assessment by KPP and we have James Geng and Brooke Carroll, Brooke Carroll from KPP here to present to us, so.
All right.
James and Brooke, take it away.
Thank you, sorry, sorry to your back. Brooke and I had the pleasure of touring your system to do a refresh of a distribution study that you had done in 2014.
Excuse me, just for the benefit of those that are watching, could I get you guys to come down here? Thanks, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Great.
So, we got to tour your system and check it out, to our pleasure and yours, this, your system is in very, very good shape and I hope that I pointed that out in this report, that it's in very good shape, you should be very proud of that. So, how our inspection consisted, since this was kind of a refresh, we didn't dive as deep with bringing in outside people, Brooke and I handled it ourselves. And so we drove the entire system, we looked at all the poles and all the wires and transformers to see what shape this is and we tried to find problems and it was very hard to find problems, so kudos to your staff on that. Um, I pointed out in the observations, I went through the different items that we kind of look at, utility poles of course were in very good shape, conductors overall were in very good shape, only suggestion is to continue to replace the copper conductors that you do have on the primary side, just because copper conductors, they kind of do have an age limit and they're probably reaching those, they become brittle and, and, easily fall down after they, after several weather events. Tree hazards, we found a few and we did highlight them in a map for you so you could find those. Meters, everything looks good there and we talked to Todd about your AMR deployment and that's great that you're, you're moving forward with that, so, and I think, and KPP's assisting you with getting that.
Absolutely, and we're very grateful.
Um, that's a good time for you to check out your polyphase customers that have CTs and PTs, you know, make sure all those CTs and PTs are working appropriately and I'm sure, I'm sure Todd knows that. Transformers, they were all non-PCB, but we understand the records have been destroyed in a previous fire and they're slowly working those records to get them back, but everything's in compliance there. Um, let's see, on the next page, we did discuss several things with staff, you know, everything from training to safety training and stuff and, and they pointed out they were satisfied with their safety training they're receiving, they would like the opportunity to attend all the training at the camp, of course this past year's been pretty trying on that, so we encourage them to seek out any KMU training that comes or APPA or anything that helped benefit them, so. Here's a little map here, I should have numbered the pages, always forget to do that. I put a little map here, I got to use a little GIS programmer, put together some kind of showing and off, kind of proud of that, so, just pointed out, highlighted a few areas that we found that were probably tree issues that you could focus on in your next tree trimming cycle. Of course, we probably didn't find every tree issue, but those were just the most major ones we found. Moving on through the report, that, so the interconnection substation, you all are aware that there's a little work going on there which should improve reliability to the city and it could also provide some opportunities for the city in the future, so we'll help, we'll help you keep an eye on that. The most important thing is a redundant feed to town was gonna be provided to you by, by Evergy in their upgrades at the Jade substation, so a future project will be to take advantage of that and incorporate it into your electric system, which will be a great benefit. Bullet number two here, we did find a pole that's probably gonna be a challenge for you in the future, we noticed severe rot around the baseline. And as you can see, this pole is not an easy pole to change out, it's got a three-pot transformer bank, it's a double dead end, this is, this is a very challenging pole to change out. It's not going anywhere by any means, it's still pretty solid, but at the ground line there's, there's lots of visible rot showing, showing there. We used our pole tester and we tested it on the next page, you'll see some graphs and it was pretty interesting, the, the top graph is taken at about three foot and that's basically to kind of get a baseline of the pole and it also measures the depth of it. The next graph is taken, I think it's about 30 degrees from the visible rot, so if you can imagine a circle, the rot's here about 30 degrees away, I took a shot and it's at an angle, so it goes below ground, okay, because that's what we're, that's where they're most successful, the most susceptible to rot. And at the very beginning at about an inch in, you, you see that big yellow area, that's a void in the pole and then going on through the pole, you know, you notice some, some wavy lines, this is all pretty good, the heart you can see in the middle, it didn't fail, but it's still showing a lot of, the resistance a lot less there, so it's softer. And then you get to the other side of the pole, probably about 12 inches deep, the pole fails again on the opposite side. So we went around to the other side and I tried to drill right into the rot area to see how deep it was and again, it's about an inch deep, but when it gets about to the middle of the pole, the needle falls off into a hole, so that tells me the inside of the pole is hollow, so, or really, really, really soft, so not much of the ground line of the pole is left, so. Another suggestion in talking with Todd, he would, he would like to work into having some kind of capital improvement program, just so that'll help you come up, not come up with, but determine your future on projects budget-wise, help you build a budget for that and also hone in on the key locations that you want to do improvements. And then on the next page, another pretty little map, where we kind of, these are areas that I noticed that would probably be items you'd want on a capital improvement program and a lot of these areas, the poles are all fairly new, just the wire was just transferred, so that'd be your copper conductors and stuff like that, which would be, you know, it'd just be a matter of restringing it, maybe changing out a few poles, but pretty good projects to do that wouldn't be very costly. With that said, you know, Brooke and I'd be glad to help you put together some kind of capital improvement program if you need.
And I know we've mentioned doing a rate study, Matt, and if we did a rate study, we, we would have to tackle that capital improvement plan at least five years out, so that would be put together there.
But overall, your system's in great shape, the rideaways are in great shape, I mean, we drove down everything.
Pretty boring.
Pretty boring, we got a low rider van and it didn't even scrape very often, did it?
Yeah. Still find every hole, I think.
You weren't buzzing around in the leaf?
Not for that, no, I think that thing nice.
But, so, I mean, you should be very proud of this system, your residents or your customers should be very proud of it, you've done a great job with it and I wish all of our cities look this well, honestly, so. Any questions? Again, if there's any way we can help you, prepare for the future or whatever, just holler, we'd be glad and we'll continue to help you with Evergy on that, the other connections.
Yeah. We appreciate it very much, you know, it's been proven over and over to me since I've been elected, just what the value of being a KPP member is and this is just a big, another part of that, so I thank you guys for the work that you do for, for KPP and specifically this work that you've done for us, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having us.
Appreciate you. Okay, we'll move into our business section of our agenda, item F1, ordinance 1329 zoning change, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir, so, Plan Commission had held their most recent meetings, what they, what the case was involves a rezoning from a commercial C2, right around the, it's right around the doctor's, the old dentist's office that's directly across the street from the old hospital. If you'll remember, last fall, we rezoned the other property across the street, it used to be the doctor's clinic, we rezoned that to R3, so the, the people who have purchased this property are requesting that we downzone it basically from C2 to R2, so it'd be a two-family residential, they could do duplexes, basically is the most intense, intense use for that. Planning Commission held a public hearing on the matter last week and so they had no public protest, nobody protested this, there was no, no, really no negative impact that they could find with making this, making this zoning change, so they voted unanimously to support the change and make this recommendation to you as the council. So the, the deal here is that it would take the zoning map and change it from C2 at six, the address is 615 South Main, so it's right across the street again from the old hospital. We'd take it from C2 to, to R2 and allow them to remodel that facility for, I believe their intention is to remodel it to rent it out as a duplex, it's a fairly good sized building, so it was purchased by a couple gentlemen on, one from in town and one from out of town to, to do this, to remodel it, I believe, make it a rental, so. We're requesting approval of the ordinance to make that zoning change, we don't find any objections to it.
Any questions for Mr. Stiles? I'm well acquainted with the building. Yeah. Spent many hours.
Many hours, man.
Yeah, my dad owned it.
Ah, okay. Gotcha.
And practice.
He was the dentist, okay, there you go.
Okay, hearing, hearing no questions, I would accept a motion to approve ordinance number 1329 and authorize the mayor to sign.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, we will poll the council, Councilman Garing?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Motion carries is approved for zero, ordinance number 1329 is approved and I will sign it. We'll now move on to, we're going to forego item two as we've already approved the Elcon invoices for payment. And we will move on to agenda item three, which is the construction agreement for county EMS, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir, so this is what we've been working on, what Triple Wolf and Garrettson's been working on for us to transfer the property for the county to build that EMS station on the old AMPI lot, it's the space that's directly south of the current, where the currently the police department is, there's a couple different pieces to this that we're gonna have to handle each separately, so the, the property itself, we moved it into the land bank, so you'll have to have, you'll act as the land bank a little later in the meeting, the city also has to agree to do this because we're, we're saying that we're gonna do the city utilities, the water sewer and electrical and then provide grading for the project at the county's discretion, which is gonna be fairly minimal on that, on the grading piece and then the curb cut, we're agreeing to pay for the curb cut and apron, it's back to the existing sidewalk in order to, to help facilitate this and that will come out of the capital improvement fund, so we have to prove it as the city and then the land bank will have to prove it as land bank and then also to issue all the easements required to go with this property and then the county will have to take it under consideration and improve it as well. So the first piece of this is to, for the city to approve the purchase or the land agreement and then when we move into it a little further, the land bank will prove the easements and also approve the agreement, so, and Kimberlin helped with the drafting of this, Kimberlin, do you have anything to add to the conversation on that?
I don't have anything to add, but I will say that if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to discuss.
Are there any questions? All clear as mud.
Or just pricing a little steep, I don't know, just kidding.
Yeah. One dollar, I have to have something in the deal to turn to.
This, I know that, again, that, that we are spending, spending money on this project, but again, I would just reiterate, it's an important infrastructure project for the city of Hillsborough in cooperation with the, with the county and Travis Parmley and his EMS crew have really, that whole, that whole program has, has been upgraded significantly over the years, the county spent a lot of money on it, they're gonna spend a lot more money here in Hillsborough, but it's, it's, it's a critical piece of infrastructure, it's important for us and for me, it's important and I think as it should be for all of us that it, that it's in the right spot and I think that it is and so, you know, I certainly hope that, that we can get a motion to approve the proposed development agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds, is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that this is something that we worked on a while back, quite a while back, of trying to keep an ambulance in, in Hillsborough and I'm glad to see that we've got something like this going, I'm glad that the county's willing to do this.
I am too, very appreciative.
Very appreciative.
Any other, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for zero and we will now move into, we will switch gears and move into a land bank meeting.
Okay.
And as chairman of the land bank, I will continue to chair the, the meeting, but first we will defer to, to Mr. Stiles and help us go through the steps that need to be taken now, please.
Yes, sir. So what we have with land bank, we'll actually have some land bank meetings, minutes to approve, which we'll, we'll get to in a second, but with the land bank, with this deal, we also have to do some easement work, pull it up real quick. Okay, so in order to do this, we also have to prove, as the land bank, you have to approve the EMS agreement because you're a signature on that, so that part of the deal is, you have to do that and then there's also some easements that need to be, deed and off here, if I could get to it, pop up. Okay, so there are a couple easements for the adjacent property, we have a mutual, our common access easement, which we have to grant, which would be from the land bank to the city and to the county, so we would all be signing on that and that's the 36 feet north of the pro, of the project area and that's to allow for people to can continue to use that as a space to go in and out of the facility, so that preserves our ability to use that, that traffic going in and out and prevents the EMS, not that they would, from blocking it in any way with a fence or something like that, so it's a common access agreement allows for both parties to have the same, same privilege to go in and out of that, so we've got a common access agreement and then we're also, the, the land bank will be giving the city easements to provide the sewer service, which you'll have in the, in the packet there, you can kind of see the sewer one, which heads south from the, the project area, it's 45 feet, no, excuse me, 15 feet wide and goes the entire length of that street down to the corner of Third and then turns the corner there and that allows us to put the sewer service in there and the front edge there and then turn it into Main, which is on the third street, so that's the, that's the sewer easement and then there's another easement that runs from the east side of the property into the, into, into where the building property is, it's a, goes from the south, or excuse me, from the east side, west side of the property into the, to the west, west to the east, get it right, and so what we're gonna do is put the water line and the electrical service in that area and there's also a ground protection easement there that'll prevent the county from doing anything so that wouldn't disturb that area, putting up a permanent structure that would impede the use of utilities there, so we've worked out all these easements with the county in advance, they've been great to work with, completely understanding about this and so this, this would, they're not really a participant in those easements, those are from the land bank to the city however weird that may seem, so that we can put those utilities in there, but the common access is, is the county is also participating in that. Clear as mud, right?
Right on.
So, we're granting easements and we're agreeing to the, the agreement that you, you just agreed to as the city council, is that probably the shorthand?
So which needs to happen first?
Okay, so, to do that, we need to do the dedication of utility easement for the water and electric first.
When we approve our minutes.
Well, yeah, approve the minutes first.
Okay.
Do that first.
So, we have minutes from our previous land bank meeting, did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections or questions regarding the minutes?
They got tucked under the PVC.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I remember seeing.
They're, yeah, they're actually, they got tucked under the wrong bookmark, so, if you go to your PVC one, it's up there, apologies on the mix up on that.
Any questions? Hearing none, would somebody care to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I will do that.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Driggers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so we will now move on to approval, approve the granting of the proposed easement to the city of Hillsborough for the purpose of providing wastewater service and authorize the chairperson to sign.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
There is.
Councilman McCarty, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is approved, we will now look to approve the granting of the proposed easement to the city of Hillsborough for the purpose of providing water and electrical service and authorize the chairperson to sign.
I'll make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Garing, seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now look to approve the granting of the proposed common access easement related to the approved development agreement to Marion County, do we need to approve that agreement first then? There's, it says approved a proposed development agreement, so we need to do that first.
Well, you can, you can do the common access easement if you don't, if you just delete the approved development agreement part, so you can approve granting the proposed common access easement related to the development agreement with Marion County and authorize the chairperson to sign.
Okay, would someone care to make that motion?
I'll do that.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and finally, we will approve the proposed development agreement and authorize the chairperson to sign, would someone care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty's in the motion-making mood, is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Driggers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that, that takes care of that, so do we need to move into a public building commission meeting now?
Uh, yes, we can do that.
Okay, we will, I will turn the, the chair over to Councilman Lowen as head of the public building commission.
Okay, I'd like to call the public building commission meeting to order, I'm having trouble finding these minutes, by the way.
They're, yeah, they're not in there, that was the land bank minutes, so we don't have the minutes.
Can we defer those until our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, let's take a look at the Elcon invoice, can you tell us about that?
Yes, sir, so, the Elcon invoices remaining costs, it was to split the electrical service with the old hospital building in Salem Home, it was actually approved back in 2018 to do this through the public building commission, however, the work couldn't be finished until Salem Home had purchased a new generator and so they have purchased their generator and put it in place and this is the, the remaining cost in order to separate those two electrical services. cost in order to separate those two electrical services. We actually, they'll begin paying their full freight. We, we have been doing a split on their electrical bill for that service. And so we've transitioned now into them paying for the full amount of that electrical service. This is just the remaining cost to do that from Elcon.
So this is the final split with electric?
This is the final split on the electrical.
Do we have a motion to approve those invoices? That invoice?
So moved.
There a second?
There.
Any discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Motion's approved. I will now dismiss the meeting.
Adjourn the.
Adjourn the Public Building Committee, Commission meeting. Thank you. I was looking for that word.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Lowen. We're now going to go back to an item that was a late addition, which is resetting the budget and the R and R hearing date. Mr. Styles?
Yes, thank you, sir. So I made a mistake when we, we set our original one. Some of the guidance we were, I was using to, to set those dates and look at the new regulations for the revenue neutral hearing had mislabeled the date of what the actual statute said to, to put that hearing. You have to have the hearing between August twentieth and September twentieth. And some of the guidance I had had August tenth, September tenth. It's my error. I didn't follow back up on that. So what we'll need to do is instead of having the budget hearing and the revenue neutral hearing on August seventeenth, we'll just have to reset that date for September, September seventh meeting, or September seventh. And then we'll have to republish the, the notice, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to set the revenue neutral rate hearing for four PM on Tuesday, September seven, and the twenty twenty-two budget hearing to follow subsequently.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Gerring moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And that takes us through our business section. We will now go to item G, board appointments. I have no board appointments today. So that takes us to city administrators report.
Thank you, sir. So water treatment plant, we've been working with a lot of issues with incoming reservoir water lately. We've had high levels of iron and manganese, which are direct results of blue-green algae blooms. And then we've been kind of subsequently fighting the blue-green algae. Once it dies, it creates iron and manganese. And so it's kind of this cycle. So we've had a weird, weird kind of bloom that we've been dealing with, and then large hits of the other, of the other minerals in there. So they feed off one another, and it, it's just a matter of trying to, to work through it and get it processed and cleaned up and make sure it's good. So we've been testing it very regularly, daily in some cases, when we were in the middle of the blue-green algae slug. So KDHE's been doing those testings for us, and we've been coming back with very, very clean results, less than point oh four parts per billion of the algae toxin, which is well below the, the safety standard for that. So it's, it's done, our, our water production team's done a great job of keeping up with it, trying to, to manage it. I know we had some complaints about the smell. It was a little bit earthy kind of smell. And so we added some carbon, extra carbon injection there to kind of take care of that. Had a few, some issues with that, and some people from the public had some complaints, but I think we've gotten a handle on it. And we had pretty good water, pretty clean, clear water moving into all the towers over the weekend, and we've been able to kind of purge the system since then. So I think we've continued working on it, making sure it stays clean and healthy and meets all the safety standards. So. Trailgate party, we're having a trailgate party tomorrow around noon to dedicate the new walking trail. We're gonna have some healthy snacks out there. We originally gonna do hot dogs, but that, that turned out to be not a healthy snack. So we switched gears on that and went with some, some other things. And so the, the gate, the party's gonna be between Main Street, on Main Street, between the two banks, Central National Bank and Hillsborough State Bank. We're gonna have, the mayor's gonna say a few words, and we'll do a dedication. The hospital's gonna be there to do, promote their walk with the dock program. TC Wireless is one of the sponsors. They'll be out there. And then we'll also have some, like I say, some healthy snacks. And so we'll, we'll have a ribbon cutting and dedicate the trail. We've had a lot of people using it. It's been really well received. We're still trying to get some good weather to get some, some striping and stuff done with it. And we're getting all the signage in, and we're gonna be putting that up too. So adding a few amenities, making it, make it a nice trail and a nice, nice asset for the community. Really happy with it. Speaking of grand openings, ribbon cuttings, we had Bombgars had their official ribbon cutting on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. I think that was pretty well attended. They had a soft opening for about a week, a week or two before that. So they've been open for a little bit. Just observing who was in the parking lot. We've had a lot of people from out of town. So I think that's a, that's a positive thing. Looking forward to, to working with them. They've been great to work with, a good company to deal with, and real happy to have them in town. So happy, happy that they're here. The fiber project continues to move forward. We've had some weather delays, obviously. The weather's been kind of crazy, and a few more utility line hits here and there. We did have a large hit on D and Floral Street on the twenty-first. That caused a service outage for a while. It was actually a, a line that we didn't have on any of our, on any of our maps. And so we had to call in some people who helped, who would have helped put it in, and some former employees to help kind of figure out what was going on with that. And we've got it patched up, we got it patched up that night and got everything back up and running. But we did have a few outages with the swimming pool and the, the sports complex were the big things that were out for a little while. But it's, it's been one of those things. Those, those are kind of growing pains. It's just part, part of the project. Project that big, you're always gonna have that kind of thing. But they're moving forward, and I think they'll be, their target date is to be it done in July and, and completely ready to turn things on. They appear to be on target for that. So looking forward to having that, that project finished and everybody up and running. So sales tax collection's been, continued to be very good. We had, you know, the last month, we had a nineteen percent increase over the month from the previous year, which was a ten percent increase from that previous year. So thirty-two percent up from, from where we were at in two thousand nineteen, which I, you know, you kind of just shake your head and go, okay, I'm not sure exactly what that is. But I think it probably has something to do with some of the pandemic stuff. You know, we've had a lot of stimulus money that's coming to the community. People are still staying local and shopping and investing in things. So we'll continue to monitor that and see if it continues. But really, really pleased with those, those receipts. We also, I put the KPP bill in there just so that everybody can take a look at that, specifically kind of tracking the, the surcharge on that. So last, last month, we paid seventeen thou, a little over seventeen thousand in, in surcharge. Overall, from when the surcharge started until the current bill, we're at seventy thousand, eighty dollars and fifty-six cents in the surcharge. And we pass that on to our customers, starting in June. So there's a little bit of a delay as to when that, that kicked in. But we'll have a tracking sheet so you can kind of see what we've been charged and, and what we've taken in so that we can keep that. So everybody kind of knows what's going on with that. And then just vacation, I'll be out of town starting next Tuesday through Friday. So, and then I also wanted to remind people, anybody who may be watching, that the, the track will be closed on the fifth for the Fourth of July holiday. We're closed on the fifth since the Independence Day falls on Sunday. And so trash collection, and when we, we have a trash day on Monday, all the people from Monday and Tuesday should put their trash out on Tuesday. We're gonna get them all, we pick them all up the same day. And I know that's something that people, people always miss. And, you know, we're always good to come back and get it. But we'd like to make sure to get it out there early on that day. And then also, we've had some issues with phones, specifically from you, anyone from US Cellular has been calling. They've been getting a message saying that our phone is disconnected. We've narrowed it down to just US Cellular customers. So there's some kind of issue with US Cellular and switching. That's creating some problems. So if anybody has that, has a US Cellular number and needs to contact the city, we suggest using the landline. You can come see us. You can also email us, and we'll, we'll take care of you. But we, we have noticed some problems with that, and we're working to get it fixed. So that is all it has, sir.
Any questions? You know, relative to the sales tax, obviously, we continue to, you know, we've seen good, strong, local support of our, of our local businesses for certain. But there's no doubt in my mind that the amount of vehicles that are both of our, all three of our car, car dealers are moving is fairly significant. And, you know, that's, that's a big, those are big-ticket items, especially, and they're getting, the ticket's getting bigger and bigger as the price tag for vehicles is, has gone up, even for used vehicles. So, you know, I'd like to thank to the, all the car dealers that, in, in Hillsborough for their efforts in, in helping support our local community. So.
One of the dealers, he, he doesn't work for us. But anyway, he, he told me, people asking him, he was getting out of business, but he sold every used car he had in one week.
Oh, wow.
Every one of them. Then he had one in that morning, sold it. So he said, people are really buying right now.
Well, there's a, again, the stimulus money, you know, that, that people have received is, you know, got them out shopping. The problem is, is that new cars coming off the line, new trucks, has been slowed significantly by the absence of chips, computer chips.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the, the market for used vehicles is very hot. I would also say, you know, I know this doesn't necessarily impact directly sales tax, but, you know, our real estate market right now in Hillsborough is hotter than a firecracker. And, you know, they're just a real low inventory of, of property available for sale. And, you know, as we have talked, we talked the other day at our, at our, our strategic planning session, you know, that, that housing issue is gonna continue, you know, going forward. And we're gonna have to be diligent about how we help try to address that issue for sure. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, it will now be time for council comments. So we'll start here. Councilman Driggers?
On today.
Okay, Councilman Lowen?
Well, I just want to invite people to come to the igloo on July the third. We'll have Matt Styles and Mayor Lou Thurston there. You can come and share all your wonderful ideas about what you think the shi, city should do and shouldn't do, whatever. Your dreams.
There you go.
That's right.
Yeah. And, and maybe even get a little, little bit off on the big Lou?
That's right. Get a big Lou for the price of a large.
Nice.
Yeah.
It is a big Lou. Those things are big.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to that, too. Gonna be a busy weekend. We've got swim team in the morning. We've got big Lou in the afternoon. And, and, yeah, so fireworks going off in all the other places, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman McCarty?
Well, I was just glad that we heard that our electric department was doing so well. I think that's really great on their part for doing such a good job over the years.
I think that we have a top-notch group just about everywhere in the city and, and our city staff and, and our city crews. And, you know, I'm very, very appreciative of the work that they do. You know, it's, I said, I recall Larry Payne making a comment once in the paper that I might not have my, made myself, but he mentioned about, he used the, the, the word crap when he talked about people getting upset about having their trees trimmed. But, you know, nobody is upset in the, in, during an ice storm when the power's not knocked out because branches fell on the lines and, and, and shorted them out. So, you know, it's a, it's sometimes a thankless job to keep those trees trimmed back. And, and not everybody understands exactly why we have to do that. But, you know, again, come, come December, January, February, when, when we've got ice storms to deal with, that's when it pays off. So, so, yeah. Councilman Gerring?
None today.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.